I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Next order of business will be the minutes from last week. I sent them out to everybody this morning, or actually yesterday morning. So I'm hoping you all got a chance to go through them and there's no issues. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
They're recording, so if you could just use your name when you say it.
Karen McCormick, I'll make a motion to accept and approve the minute.
Second. I'll second it.
I have amendment.
Okay, now here we go. So now if there's discussion?
So in to the first thing about Karen, about wanting a tabulation, I'd like to have in there that you said you weren't prepared to vote on the districts because you needed more information. So Representative McCormick stated that she was not prepared to vote on the districts drafted by the committee at this meeting because she required more information. She requested the voter enrollment tabulation breakout report for November 2021.
Any other discussion?
And then, oh, I'm sorry.
In the second bullet point, I just wanted to add a sentence. Mr. Wagner provided Representative Iakono the requested map at the meeting.
Oh, yeah, did you bring it with you again?
No, I didn't.
Oh.
You should have told me.
It's so nice and big.
I know. We could send Matt back to get another one.
No, thank you.
Well, seriously, because I have to write it down.
Sure.
That's the first thing.
Do you have it in writing for it?
I do.
Can you just hand it to us?
I didn't redline it, but that last sentence here.
Then you get to read it back to us.
Okay, so Representative McCormick stated that she was not prepared to vote on the districts drafted by the committee at this meeting because she required more information. She requested a voter enrollment tabulation breakout report for November 2021. Representative Iakono requested the voter registration list of the March 2022 and that the population numbers to be added to the census block on the party affiliation is drafted on March 15. Mr. Wagner provided Representative Iakono the question map at the meeting. No votes were taken to finalize the map. Were just, did you, that's an accurate reflection of my stuff. Did you go back and listen to the tape? Is that?
No, I didn't listen to the tape. I just know that's what happened. I saw Matt come in with it.
Are you comfortable with that?
Let me read it. I do take issue with the statement was not prepared to vote on the districts drafted by the committee. I don't know what that means.
Well, on the maps, you want to say on the maps?
The maps that we drew?
You said you weren't prepared to vote that night because you had to get more information, so you can.
When I started the meeting, that's where we started to talk about if we're going to accept the maps the way they were drawn. So and you said no because you needed more information, which I'm assuming you both got, right?
Yes, now we have it.
Yeah, I didn't, because I didn't see your request, though.
No.
I'm just assuming you got the information.
I sent you the voter thing that I got.
I would just offer that, that the.
I forwarded it to you and I said, please share.
I don't even remember seeing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I got, it just came to me, so I forwarded it to you.
When did you get it?
The next day.
Okay.
So please share.
Okay, I didn't.
I would add or modify the statement, vote on the districts to vote on the map.
What, just tell me, just do me a favor, just tell me what you want. I want to do it.
Yep. Districts to say no.
Okay, so total re- Representative McCormick stated she was not prepared to vote on the map drafted by the committee at this meeting because she required more information. She requested the voter enrollment tabulation breakout report for November 2021.
Okay.
All right, so we got an amendment now? Any further discussion on the amendment?
No.
We all prepared to vote on the amendment?
Sure.
All in favor? Aye. Now we go back to the original motion with the amended minutes as they are presented. Or is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Okay, so item number three, to finalize maps drawn at the previous meeting. So we're back to where we were with the 10 that we drew, with the lines the way they were. I supplied everybody with the individuals, the individual 10s that we could look at. I also supplied everybody with, well, Matt supplied us with the big ones so we could see it, but we really didn't go through it last week. So let's prepare to have a discussion about the 10, where we are and where we're going. The floor is open.
So at this time, I would like for us to recess on this and we are a committee that is running parallel to Charter Revision Commission and I would like to wait for Charter Revision Commission to make some decisions before we go anywhere with furthering our efforts on this.
But we have a charter in front of us that says that we're supposed to do this.
Yes, we do.
So now you're hedging on a future?
I'm not hedging on anything.
Okay.
We are not, by state statute, do not have to hand in this map until March of 2023. And I am, I don't see the reason why we need to rush this right now, only to possibly end up having to change it again. So I would just like to recess for a short while and we let the other process play out for a little while.
So you want to make that as a formal motion?
I, there's no need to make it a formal motion.
Well, the committee would have to agree to do that. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to do that. But I mean, I, just so we can have the discussion about it.
There's no need to make a motion.
Okay.
I mean, there's four people on the committee. If two people want to recess and we aren't going to meet again on this, then we're not going to meet on this again.
Then, okay, then I'm going to open it up for discussion on the statement based on, and I'll start it. It's the SLMC and the RTM gave us a charge and they told us that they wanted this to get done. So therefore, the town charter, as well as the RTM SLMC, gave us something that they said that we needed to do and they gave us dates to which do it. And we all, and you, Pam, being on the SLMC, agreed with that to start with. So I don't understand what the point of a recess would be because now we're just looking at something that may or may not happen in the future.
You're right, I did agree to start the process. I agreed to start the process under the, now what I understand to be, the false premise of if we didn't get this started, we would be forced to pay a significant amount of money because we would have to add voting machines in time, additional voting machines in time to meet the primary. I, within a few meetings of all of that happening, I went back to the majority leader and told her that that was not the case. The registrar's office may choose to add additional voting machines because we have 17 districts, but that has nothing to do with any of the actions or action not taken by a redistricting committee. There's nothing that says that they have to add all those machines. That's how they're going to choose to do it. That, whether or not we do this or we don't do this, there are other ways to do that. There are other ways to have handle the fact that the state changed the lines and adding machines is not the only one. And I'm not here to tell the registrar's office how to run their operations, but they don't have to do it that way. And that's why I bought into we had to get it done by the primary. And I served on redistricting before. And I have to tell you, after that, I came out of the SLMC meeting and I'm like, none of this is making sense to me because we were never under such a tight deadline before. I'm like, this doesn't make sense. I've been on this committee before. I sat on it. We weren't meeting any type of deadline like that. And that's what made me start to look into it. And I'm like, wait a second.
You were on a different.
I was on a, yeah, I was on the, you know, in the previous, in a previous term. I was on the redistricting committee before this committee.
Right, but after the first one, first one.
I was not on the committee that's wrong.
That failed.
Yeah.
So can I say a few things?
Please.
So I think that there's several scenarios. First of all, we really have a different charge from the Charter Revision Committee and or Commission. And to change what we're doing and the things we've accomplished because of what might possibly happen on that seems unreasonable and not good for the town. If we create this, if we approve this map, and I know there could be tweaks to it, but we have 10 districts, people could know now where they're going to vote for the primary and the regular election. And then if the Charter Revision Commission votes for 10 districts, that can continue. We didn't work in vain. And if the Charter Revision Commission votes on something, but then the vote fails at the, at the election in November, we still have the 10 districts that everybody can use. So either way, other than there being a proposal for, like right now, I know the first proposal was for nine districts. If that happens and that's accepted and that's approved by the town, then yeah, they have to go back to the drawing board. But there's a lot of other scenarios where it may not be. And we're so close. We worked really hard for weeks on this after agreeing to do it. So why not just finish it? Just seems like we have it, you know, worst case, it doesn't get used after this year. And then if we don't do anything, the registrar, whatever the registrar does, they have to come up with some kind of voting places to accommodate these changes, either 17, which is what we had heard initially, or three or whatever. And it'll be confusing to people. I think to do something that's less confusing is really important so people can vote. So I don't, I think we should just push ahead. And so the deadline, I think the reason we have such a short time is because the census came out later. I'm kind of looking at the registrar. So therefore, the districts at the state level were done later. And now we have the primary and the election coming up. So it is a tight thing, as you know, because even for the original charge, it was February. Luckily, we figured out a way to stretch it to April. But I would really encourage us to finish the job. We're so close. And then it's there, it's in our back pocket and we can use it. Or not use it if things change after November, but.
If I may respond, I am inclined to agree with Pam Iakono about this. I don't believe that it's a simple matter of, well, if we did get, you know, if we vote these maps in, we're all set. I mean, there's a likelihood of some sort, I don't know what the probabilities are, that we're going to be in some kind of a different form of government, whatever that means in terms of representation. And I believe that if we change, we haven't even agreed that it's going to be four representatives per district. We were starting to have discussions last week about whether or not that was going to be the case. But people are going to get reconfigured presumably for the November election and if the charter reform goes through, they're going to get yet new assignments again for the following year. And I think that that's very confusing to the electorate. And we've all talked about how it's very important for people to know where their polling location is and to not constantly tell them where you're going to be voting here on this election and then next year, give them a new assignment as to where they have to go. I also think that it's, knowing what we know now about the fact that we don't need to spend tens of thousands of dollars to accommodate the districts for the upcoming election and primary, there's no need to push this through. I don't, I don't see the urgency in making sure that this goes through. And, you know, I think that it, you know, with all due respect, I know Karen, you're saying that we're so close and we're right on the cusp. I don't actually believe that we are. I think that we're several meetings away from finalizing these maps. I know that you and Hal may believe that we were on the verge of agreeing to everything, but there was a lot of analysis that Pam and I were undertaking to kind of look at whether or not this was the fairest way to do this and.
Which we could have done last week and this week and gotten ahead.
Well, except, except that it doesn't make sense to do that when we have charter revision that's talking about potentially changing the representative form of government to a different number. And I think it would be insane to spend more time poring over maps, using energies that quite frankly, could be for naught because there's going to be a potential change in the government come November. So for all those reasons, I support Pam's request that the committee be recessed for now until such time as there's a final determination on, you know, doesn't mean that we throw away the maps that we've worked on. We can continue to take up analysis of those at the appropriate time. But until we actually determine if this is going to be a 10 and four situation or nine and three or whatever it's going to be, I don't think it makes any sense to give out assignments to voters as to where they're going to vote and then give them a new assignment again after, after the charter revision, you know, if it passes, when it passes.
Well, they'll have that anyway, right? If we don't do anything, if they're going to be voting somewhere, who knows?
Well, except that they're going to continue to vote where they've always voted.
No, they won't.
No, not necessarily. I wonder if we could ask the registrar and ask him some questions?
Because the, the state representative districts have changed, so the voter locations will have to change because they are no longer, some of them are no longer in their old state district. They've been moved. So therefore, we're, if we don't, if we don't give everybody.
They can still vote in the same location.
Not necessarily. Because if they're not in, if they're not in the same state district that they were before, then they can't use that. So the lines have been changed, so.
Why can't they program the machines to accept?
It's not the, it's not the programming of the machines. It's the voter, it's the location of the, of the building. It needs to be, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong.
Would you mind just asking the interesting question?
That's how, right now, you have people who are in, at Fairfield Woods Middle School. Some of them live in the 134th and some of them live in the 133rd.
Uh huh.
And they're.
How we get those numbers?
And they're at Woods. So that's not, that's not how it needs to be.
But it's confusing if they do that, if possible.
They're doing it right now.
It's not confusing, it's where people vote.
Could we ask Matt to join us? So, because we're all speculating on what the registrar has to do. It would really help and I'm curious, knowing now that we may not have to do 17 districts, what the cost might be realistically. Is that okay with you, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm not sure that.
I take issue with it at this point, I do.
Well, I want to know exactly what the, what the registrars have to do based on if we don't move forward. Because right now, we have 17 districts. So my question to the registrar would be, I know he stated that we have to have 17 voting locations and we all know that, but the question is, is whether the voting locations will change? Because the only discussion we're having now is, you said that the people are going to vote in the set. You don't want to confuse people by moving forward with this and then changing it again. But my question to you, Matt, is, is does the voter location change if we don't make a change now?
Well, it can't because they already have two state districts voting in the same location.
Right.
So if that was illegal.
Can we ask the person who runs the election?
So Matt, the question is, is can the voter locations, can the 10 vote, polling locations remain the same as they stand right now without speculation as to how many more you might have to open? So I guess that would be the question, right? Is the 10 places that we have right now are viable voting locations? Is that fair?
It's 11.
Well, it's 10 locations.
Yes, but it's 11.
11 districts, right. It's 11 different voting polling, right. So is that?
So I'll just say, our, our sort of mandate is to provide a polling place within each voting district, right? If the registrars agree that there's no suitable location inside of a district, we can place a voting district in an adjacent district. So it can share a building. It can be two polling places in the same room. You can have two polling places in different rooms in the same building. You do have some options like that. I'll say, you know, a lot of the dollar factor of having 17 districts is additional staffing, right? You have to have additional lines to give people the different ballots that they'll be getting for this state rep. district. So some of that is not dependent on machines. Some of the factors about the machines, you know, we can agree amongst ourselves, we're going to hand count some ballots in one district. You know, this district only has 100 voters. Maybe we can hand count it and that's cheaper, but a little inconvenient. Maybe you can do that in some places, right? We haven't gotten really deep into those negotiations. But our position in the office to be optimistic about this committee's process, right? We don't want to have negotiations on a bunch of things that are not ultimately going to be necessary if you don't have to. So, you know, we'll get into that stuff. I'm sure if you guys decide that you want to have 17 districts for this coming election year, you know, I'll say, one of the things that we discussed sort of at the very start of this committee's work was in talking about how different towns do this process. Most of our sort of tier towns, like larger multiple district legislative bodies, towns in Fairfield County have separate districts for the state year and the local year. And just as one, one thing that occurred to me yesterday, a potential avenue of compromise to allow you to sort of postpone your, the ultimate decisions about what you want to do until past the charter revision process, might be to say, you know, we drafted this plan that we came up with together. You could, as a question of what you want to put in the ordinances, make it only apply to state federal elections. And then if you wind up having 10 districts subsequent to the charter revision process, whether the Charter Revision Commission endorses 10 or you have, you know, the vote for whatever change they propose fails, then you have a plan that can be easily continued and that sort of gives people clarity for this election without obligating you to have this applied to your RTM district. You could actually put that in your ordinance if you wanted to. So that's one path forward, possibly. And I'll say that's not an unusual thing. Sanford, Norwalk, Westport, Bridgeport, Stratford, all have that as their policy. So if you go up the coast, most similar towns do have that as what they do. You know, if you decide you want to go for 17, I'm not going to say that you can't, right? We'll live with whatever you do. This is, this is within your power here. But we're happy to help you come to whatever resolution you can.
Thank you.
Can, can we have the question answered, though, that?
Yeah, we're just about to ask because you still haven't answered the question. The question is, is are the 11 polling locations that we currently have, if we did not move forward with this, would they remain the same? Or would the voters have to go to, be told to go to different places?
I'm sorry, I thought I answered that at the start, but maybe I answered it in registrar talk, in the normal committee people talk. So we have to put a polling place in every district if we can.
And then we have that.
If the registrars agree that there are no suitable polling places, then we can agree to move it to a neighboring district. And so I think in some cases, you'll find that there is, you know, the polling place we're using is not inside the district. For example, in some cases, the split that's created, there is a good school or a good public building that we can use in that district that is not being used right now. So I think there are some examples like that. And I haven't gone through and said, you know, this one is going to be a new place. This one, everyone's going to go to the old place. Like we, we haven't done that negotiation between ourselves and the office. So I don't want to sort of do that without like my counterpart here, right? But that's, that's something I think that, that we would decide if you, as a group, said, we're going to go with 17.
So the answer to the question is, is we don't know right now.
Yeah, I'm sure that some would be the same and a couple would change.
Okay, so.
I think I have to observe that this change from not continuing to work came up last week when the Charter Revision Commission, which you know Pam because you're on it, heard from their lawyer about the proposals for government, including a nine district RTM. So I just, I feel frustrated that the work we're doing here is being sidelined because of something that a whole other commission is doing.
Karen, I totally respect that. I do.
Thank you.
Sincerely, I do. And I really, really regret ever agreeing to populate the committee. And, and I, I understand exactly what you're saying. In fact, in a different way, but in, but I feel the same frustration. But I, I was never enthusiastic. I never understood why this was rushed on to our very first meeting agenda of the RTM. I, that, that in and of itself to me was perplexing. I did not understand why. Because again, even if you go back to like 2015 redistricting, and I went back and looked.
You know, the timeframe.
We didn't take it up again. We didn't assign anything till February. And I never understood, like, why it's an organizational meeting of the RTM and all of a sudden, this is a big giant rush.
Yeah, the problem with 2015 is that the census was done when it was supposed to be done in January. So therefore, the legislative body voted on it. This was all out of whack because of COVID, so we got pushed back. So I understand the timelines don't match.
But again, but again, that is why there is an allowance to get this done in March of 2023. And I, again, don't understand, didn't understand the rush to do it in November, why it couldn't have been on the January meeting for, you know, for, for a population. And then, you know, have the discussion of where we're going and then set up the meetings and set up the calendar. And, you know, the whole need to fast track it, so.
Well, we've talked about that here, right now even, that it would be 17 districts. And why, why do that when we could set it up? And we did do it quickly. I mean, there may be tweaks you and Karen want to do, but we did it quickly, so it.
I hear you and I understand your frustration, but I.
So can you explain to me why what might happen in the future makes a difference?
I, I don't understand the point of putting everybody through all of this work, adopting this, going through all of the conversation only to repeat the entire episode again come November. That ultimately, the people that decide this are the voters. They are the ultimate arbitrators of what is going to happen in this unique situation. And to me, they trump everything. They trump everything.
But they voted for us under the old charter and that includes having us do this. So it can go either way.
I understand, we're not going to reach consensus on this. You want to adopt it, I respect it. I would like to take a pause and you don't have to agree with me. That's fine. I totally understand.
So again, I'm just gonna, so.
I am not, to answer your question, I am not prepared to take any action this evening.
Because of charter revision?
Because I'm not, I, because I think that we need to not set ourselves up here doing work that might end up going nowhere.
What if it doesn't?
Then we picked this all right back up again.
Right, but then you're under the same timeframe and the same time constraints that we were.
No, you're not.
This year, yeah, because we have to wait till November.
Yeah.
The referendum passes. And if it fails, now it's on our December agenda and everything needs to be done by April again. So you're still under the rush, but now you have to do it.
Right.
It has to be done.
Well, we can.
Under that timeframe, so.
And it could end up with 10 districts.
So that's why.
Well, if you'd like to, we can call back another meeting and we can work on two maps. We can have one running parallel on nine and one with the 10.
But you're, why are you so sure nine will pass?
I'm not, I'm not certain at all. I am, I am, I would tell you that I am 100% not certain at all. I am telling you that the finer arbitrator on this is the voter, not me.
Right.
And to, and to counter you, Karen, how are you so sure that 10 and 4 is going to be the number?
I'm not, I'm just, as I mentioned before, if there's several scenarios where it could be 10 next year. It could be under CRC or if the vote fails. So why not finish what we started? I mean, I'm saying.
And that's where I'm coming from. Only because if the voters do not pass whatever the resolution is, and I'm not sure exactly how the process works. I assume it's a straight up and down vote on it, then we could take the work that we did and finalize it and not start over.
You're not starting over, you're just recessing.
We're not, we're not, I'm not asking to dispel anything that we've already done. None of this is going in the shredder, none of it's going in the trash. None of it, it's just going on pause.
So we'll, we'll be guaranteed to have districts this year that are not the districts next year because they have to figure, we have 17 districts.
I don't have any intention of ever getting us into a situation that happened two redistricting committees ago. I, I, I was, that was the reason why I asked to be on the new redistricting committee.
But how, what does that have to do with this?
Well, I'm not sure what your question was.
Yeah.
It sounded like you were asking if we were looking to stall it past.
No, no, I'm saying so 2022 will, if we, if we recess it, 2022 will definitely have voting places or districts that will not be what they have next year, because either it'll be nine or ten or fifty-seven, you know, districts, whatever. So we're guaranteeing that people will have to go to one place this year and then next year figure out a different place, whereas, as I've said, I know too many times, that if it's ten districts, they go to the places they're assigned to theoretically permanently and then depending on what happens with charter revision, they may be able to just keep going to the same voting places, so there's no confusion.
And they might not, I mean, that's, that's a real possibility.
Yeah, but why not make it easy? I don't know, I, it, and we're, we're, we're just.
We're going to tag along, sir.
You've made up your mind, so there's no way they're not.
Well, yeah, and, and that's, that's what, that's where, that's what this is all about. We're supposed to sit here and, and debate what, what's going on and, and have conversations and, and, uh, at the end of the night, we're going to end up wherever we end up and then, you know, we'll walk away or we'll come back and, because, you know, if, you know, if we change our mind and, and that's, let's be honest, that's what we're here to do. We're here to try to change each other's minds, that's what this is all about. We're here to debate and see if we can out debate you and, and get you to see our side, but.
Well, I disagree. I'm not here to debate or out debate anyone.
I know.
I, I, I take issue with that. I'm not here to out debate anyone.
Well, I, I mean, I, I want to make sure that everybody gets their say and, 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 you know, we all understand where we are, so.
What do we think of my thought that we could vote on the ten districts just for the purpose of this election and then come back later if we have to and, and tweak it or whatever, just so that for purposes of making it easier for them? I don't know even what I think, but.
I think that's confusing to the electorate, too, way too confusing and, um.
More than what we already have.
Yes.
Looking forward to.
Yeah.
Can you explain that?
Yeah.
Based upon what Matt has described, that, that without knowing, we don't know right now if the voting locations for all of the voters will remain the same.
But if we set up districts for the.
Let's just wait, hold on a second, forget about changing anything. Right now, everybody who's on the voter rolls can potentially vote in the district that they've always voted in. As we sit here tonight, that's what we know. We don't know anything other than that, right?
Well, we know there's going to be additional voter locations or split.
But they might be within the physical location of the current existing building. That's possible.
It is possible, yes.
If the two registers got together and said, let's do this for this one election or whatever. So I believe that changing, telling voters that they're going to go to a new location and then telling them they're going to go to another new location next year is problematic, especially when we are not under a legal obligation from the state to do this.
Yeah, but we are from the town. I mean, the town charter says we need to get this done as soon as the census is done and that's the existing charter that we have before us.
And, and this is a unique.
So the charter, yeah.
Unique situation.
But the charter is still the charter until it's changed.
But we have every intention of getting it done by March of 2023.
But the charter says we need to get it done as soon as the, as soon as the state representatives are done, as soon as possible to get the districts drawn. That's what the charter says now.
And I would argue it's not possible based upon.
Okay, in the interest of moving this along, because we're going to talk in circles, I'll go back, I'll look at what Matt proposed, I'll go look at what the other towns had and we can meet again on that particular subject. You can put that on an agenda for the next meeting, okay?
The problem is the next meeting is scheduled after the, um, well, I don't know now.
It has to be until April tenth, I think.
Right, but our next.
I think next, do we have one next week?
No, we don't have one next week, because we have three.
Oh, yeah, we have.
Our next meeting is scheduled for April eleventh. So we would, if we're going to do that, we'd have to set up a special meeting in order to do that. So if that's a discussion we want to have, why don't we at least, let's see if we can get there now, talk about it some, see what it comes out to be, and then we could schedule a meeting just to speak on that, on those terms and get something, because we still need to get it to the RTM so they can vote on the ordinance even if.
So that, so the RTM has to vote on that as well?
Hmm, I would think ordinance is the ordinance, so I think we would have to set up the state.
All right, well, then you know what, then let's, let the registrars just work it out and then we are where we are.
So no, we're not going to have a discussion about states.
So I know I'm being very calm and I do respect you both a lot, but this is very, very frustrating and the wrong decision and not good for the town.
Okay, that, that, I, I respect that and I know you're frustrated, but you can't, and you can express that as your opinion, but you can't tell us we're wrong. I'm not sitting here telling you you're wrong. I respect what you're saying.
I think it's the wrong decision for the town.
Okay, I got it. That, that's a fair statement and that's fine, but you can't tell us we're wrong.
I'm sorry if I said you were wrong, I'm sorry, but I do.
And I feel that it's the best decision for the town, so we have a difference of opinion.
Right, we obviously have a difference of opinion.
I think it's wasted time, effort, energy, possibly throwing people into flux as to where they're going to be and it doesn't need to happen.
We knew since the meet, their presentation though, that it didn't have to be seventeen districts, so it's, and then we went ahead and created our map, so it's funny that it's just coming up, yes, last week, that now it's, you know, a waste, but.
It's not a waste, I, you shouldn't use the word that it's a waste.
It's a waste for this year's election, but you're right, we, it could be kept. Can the public talk?
No.
No?
I did not put public comment on the agenda, so no, I'm not taking public comment on this meeting tonight. Um, so I, I, I guess the, the next, ah, I don't know, I wasn't really prepared for not.
So we're not prepared to take any additional action on any of this. The only thing that we are prepared to do at this moment is a motion to adjourn.
Could the SLMC repopulate?
Well, the SL, that's a whole decision.
I, 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 I don't think that they should. I don't think any reason to.
I don't think that they should either, I think, you know.
I, I think this is a nice working committee, we are working well together.
We are.
I have no objections to the members or the representatives that are on here now. Um, an appointment would have to come through for two additional Republicans and I, I don't.
Unlikely to happen.
Yeah.
There's an out of danger.
Yeah.
Um, I guess we're really stuck between a rock and a hard place is where we really are, so, um, I'm, I'm not sure what if, I, I mean, there is no recourse. The committee is at a, um, a, 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 a bridge that we can't cross, um, and, um, I don't know what to say. All I can, I can say is, you know, we spent, we, and I agree Pam, we did really good work and I'm, I'm really excited about the maps that we have. I think they were, we did it fairly and, and we did it without any, um, any other things